Good to see you all this evening. So we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right on to the agenda. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. And we do have some additions to the Exhibit A Personnel Items, Items 174 through 177. So those will be added to that motion and read into the motion. Do we have any other changes? By my move, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Full call.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, very good. Moving on to recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. At this time of year annually, the Village of Gurnee and the Henderson Foundation sponsor a Gurnee Teacher of the Year at all of our Gurnee area districts. And so it's a very special honor because each year, our Teacher of the Year is selected by their peers. And obviously, that's a very meaningful statement of professionalism and admiration that colleagues have for the person they select for the Teacher of the Year. This year, in Warren Township High School District 121, I'm very proud to please bring up Ms. Chris Mason. And I'm going to say a few things about Chris.[132.26][132.26][applause] So for those of you that don't know, Ms. Mason, and I think most people in here do, she's been with us since 1983. Taught business education in our district at both O'Plane and Allman campuses over the years. And for the last 26 years, has been a core piece of our leadership group for our future Business Leaders of America, which is not only an enormous accomplishment in terms of Chris's time and energy that she puts to our FBLA organization, but I do believe our FBLA organization is the best in the world. And they have proven it year in and year out, that obviously, you're doing great things in terms of modeling for our kids. So it's great pleasure that I announce today for our board. And on May the 1st, we'll do this at the Village Hall for the Village of Gurnee and present Chris Mason with our 2017 Teacher of the Year Award.[187.86][187.86][applause]
I will say a few words because one thing I always say when the parents come to Open House in the fall is that I truly believe I believe blue and gold. It's true, I've been here since before the fire.[213.86][213.86][laughter] Men through some floods and who all knows what else. Did take about five years off in between then when I had my two kids who also graduated from Warren. So not only have I been a staff member here, I've been a parent here. I'll continue to be a resident of the district once I retire. And I am just flattered and pleased and honored that I was selected for this.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. This is the part of the meeting where some of our -- anyone can address the board if they would like to. You get three minutes to say your piece. And we do have some people that have signed in today. So we'll go with the first one, which I think is Tammy? Tammy Smoran?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm up here, Tammy, so we can hear you.
I feel more comfortable standing.
Okay.
Okay, we want you to be comfortable.
I am here tonight because of the hearing I have for November 11, 2017, before the full board to address the concerns of all of my children currently at the role as students at the O'Plane campus. Under the federal law known as FERPA for the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, I have basic rights as a parent to request that the school amend my student's educational record and address concerns regarding it. My son is an honor student in the AP program. We have evidence to present which will clearly show that his grade is not based on academic standing. At the next scheduled closed session board meeting on the 11th, we want a hearing to share the documents that will show that my son's educational record needs to be amended to reflect his actual academic performance. My husband and I, as parents, have exhausted all our other avenues after taking the matter to the teacher, the principal, and the superintendent. The teacher would not address our multiple requests to set up the time to resolve the makeup force and also ignored our direct questions. Ultimately, he provided no opportunity for my son to complete certain assignments. I strongly feel that this teacher has then retaliated against my son after my husband and I became involved by exercising our parental disavowment rights as expressed in the Warren Township Policy 895. We have done everything we can with the school, and now we're coming to you, the school board. Please consider this my formal request for a board hearing.
They're fine.
Was I interrupting you?
No, I was starting a timer.
Oh.
You would never interrupt. I'm always listening.
I have a copy of this request for all board members. For your school board secretary, Jeanne Love. My emails listed below so that Miss Love can confirm her place on the schedule. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very good. You'll get your hearing.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tam?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm Mr. Tim Smoran from the great state of Georgia. I'm a sophomore at Warren Township High School, playing campus.
Do you want to come up and speak? You're a little softer.
My name's Tim Smoran. I live at 551 Pine Grove in Gurnee. And just the same situation I'm addressing here. My son's a sophomore at Warren Township High School, playing campus. And since we came forward, our son, who has been in the 99th percentile since elementary school in language arts and placed in the 99th percentile in his P SATs, is now receiving a stream of Fs and Ds from this teacher, Mr. Baker. We believe he is being bullied by this teacher by manipulating assignments to not reflect his academic standing. We refer you to Warren Township High School Policy 7.180. We also have information from other parents who substantiate this claim with their students. We tried to address this with the superintendent, who would not acknowledge it was a problem and or make us aware of our FERPA rights. And we wanted to know how to file a formal agreement on this matter and who to address this with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gina Garcia?
Hi, my name is Gina Garcia. My son's a sophomore here at Warren. My son is part of the band program here at Warren. And as most of you know, a couple of weeks ago, the band performed Dad Disney, which is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to march down Main Street. On Saturday, March 4th, we were notified that a child was suicidal. And we were approached by the fact that one of the chaperones or a pair of chaperones had to give up a room for that child to be in with another chaperone for a 24-hour surveillance with a chaperone. There was no medical attention, nor was there any other type of consequence, whether the child was to go home and whatnot. As I was told by my son, the child said something about some suicidal ideation, a teacher overheard, and it was supposed to take proper action. So my questions are a few things in regards to that. What is our Warren personnel mandate to report such type of event and how so? Is the child supposed to receive proper medical observation? Was a 911 supposed to be called? Should a child been to an ER, get proper observation from medical personnel? Should a child have been away from his peers as well as to the public? This child was still allowed to go to the public parks the following day, as long as with the chaperone? And that caused a lot of concern among other chaperones, that fact that the child's safety, as well as the public's safety and with its peers? And should this actually be a chaperone responsibility, supervise 24 hours, without not having actual proper training or responsibility of that child? The parent was not -- the child was not a child of that particular parent? And so I'm actually requesting a formal hearing to address these concerns and wanting to know what is the policy here at Warren, or as well as the district overall? And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. We certainly understand your concerns. But as you may imagine, we really can't comment on student issues specifically. We can certainly discuss the policy and how we should react to these things, and we'd be happy to do that. So and certainly, we're aware of what's been going on to some extent. So we appreciate your input, though we're always welcome people to come in and speak with us. So thank you. Carol?
Good evening. My name is Carol Chamondo. It is disturbing that --
Can you speak to the ladies?
It's okay, I have a cold, so please forgive me. It is disturbing that in the last few months, I have been receiving, on average, about a call a week from parents with children in your district stating that they've heard about what happened to my daughter while she was a student here and how their child is now having issues and could I help them because they feel they have nowhere to go. I would have hoped that after what we went through in trying to resolve what was done to my daughter while she was here, that this would not be the case. I am sick that I live in a community where so many kids are being short-changed, that I pay almost $10,000 in taxes to live in Gurnee, and that of my four children, two were prevented from the educational experience they deserved under your leadership. That my fourth and youngest child is being homeschooled out of fear for his health and safety. Thankfully, my other children have gone on to success in the fields of engineering and medicine. No thanks to most of you sitting here on the board seats. I ask that you please get to the business of caring about the success of all children. While I love to help my community, I feel that I could be doing other things and that for parents to sit at home and feel the way I felt in the two years of trying to take care of my daughter, who was left at home from January to June, two years consecutively, with no tutoring, no help, no support, I would like to think that no other parent has to go through some of these situations. Please, please, for those of you who may get re-elected or for those new members coming on, I ask that you think carefully about the fact that you are affecting the future of children who come to this school. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a Terry Clampett here, but it's crossed out.
I did, yes, sir.
So do you want to step forward or not?
Dr. Oliver, may I just recommend that we not speak again? I'm to clarify, here, I mean, to talk about the question. So you're more than welcome to speak. More than welcome to speak. On his behalf. My statement on his behalf. You can say whatever you would like.
You don't have to mention his name.
I don't have to or can't?
You can mention any name you want. We can't mention names.
We can't mention names.
You can mention names.
Very well.
Not necessarily a great idea, but that's all right. It's your right.
I'll try and edit out the name. I think the parties here know who I'm speaking of. Forgive me, I'm not eloquent. I have a Word document that I typed up. And if you'll allow me to read it, I would appreciate it. My name is Terry Clampett. I live in Waukegan, Illinois, part of the Gurnee School District. And so, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not accustomed to speaking before groups, nor am I eloquent. I am, however, willing to stand before you as a friend of a student's family to speak in favor of their son's character. Let me share with you a statement my wife wrote and read during a previous hearing that was held in this matter. I echo her sentiments exactly. I am here today to support a child. My husband and I have had the pleasure of knowing him since he was five. He has since a young age shown respect, responsibility, and consistency when it came to his education. Being raised by a single mother, he had the positive influences of his grandfather, his stepfather, and myself. My children attend this school and have always known him to be an outstanding person. My wife grew up in a very rough neighborhood. She has seen many young people taken by the streets and given up by society. When does the cycle end? The punishment never fits the crime, and this needs to end. Please allow this young man to continue his education so that he may return to be a great example and productive member of society to all young men. I would also appeal to your hearts and ask that you have compassion and empathy, not only for this young man, but also his family. A dedicated, hard-working mother who raises her children to be good people who respect others. His brothers and sisters who look up to him as an example and mirror his character. His father, stepfather, and grandfather, who have encouraged exemplary behavior and respect for others. Consider, if you will, second chances. Who among us may have been given that very thing that made the greatest difference in who we are today? Shall we discard our young people and not offer assistance or be there to help, nurture, encourage, and educate? Give this young man a second chance to show us all we were right. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Nice.
Nice to say. Okay, we will take that under -- all these things under advisement. We appreciate all of your input, and we will move on in the meeting. Next item on the agenda is the president's report. So I don't really have anything new to report. So we will move on to committee reports, which is the insurance committee.
We had a -- March 15th, we had an insurance committee meeting. We continue to look at our renewals for the 17-18 school year. And that process will continue at our next meeting, which is April the 11th, which is plenty of time for the union executive team, as well as the board leadership team, to see those renewals, those potential renewals in April. And then we would hopefully have an open enrollment during the month of May. So that's our timeline going forward. Our next meeting is on April the 11th.
Okay, superintendent's report is next.
My board and your board packets, we have our monthly enrollment, attendance, suspension, and staffing reports. And we also have a treasurer's report. Carol?
I've included in your board packet the treasurer's report for February 2017 for the general fund and student activity funds. I've included in there a narrative of some important information for February along with summary financial statements and more detailed financial statements. The dashboard is the one I would like to refer you to. I think that gives you a very good snapshot of what February looks like. We continue to monitor as we get into the last three months of the year. So I will provide you a more detailed report in April for March results. On a side note, I wanted to thank the PE department, since they're here tonight, for the great assistance that they gave us with our 10-week fitness challenge for staff. And for those of you board members that don't know what we did, we had an institute day on January 9th, which was centered around wellness. And fortunately, we had some PE teachers and other staff that not only conducted a pre and a post-fitness assessment, for those that were interested, but also had classes that we did after school that were led by the PE, the staff, and others. So we hiked on Saturdays, we worked out during the week, we did yoga, and it was all time that they volunteered. So that fitness challenge actually ended on Sunday. We had 82 people that did the assessment. And for most of the classes, we probably had 30 participants. People could exercise on their own. But it was a great way to work out with our colleagues, use our equipment, and to really make new acquaintances and to get healthier during the wintertime, which is not, you know, our finest, probably, exercise time. But when you're doing it with your colleagues and people that motivate you, it's a great way to do that. And, you know, our fitness assessment on Monday, the PE staff was motivating us to do one more crunch, one more push-up, one more pull-up. And so it was just a great experience. And I want to thank them for all their time spent. So hopefully, we can do it again next winter. So I just want to throw that in there.
In addition, board members, you should feel very good because tonight, we had our centennial event over for our badminton team over at O'Plane. We still have some spring centennial events that are going on. And they were playing at the same time that our boys' water polo team was playing, and our girls were playing away. And so those were three sports that the board supported last year. And it's certainly nice to see those students getting an opportunity to participate in some different types of activities. We also have most of our other spring sports underway. And tomorrow, our boys' volleyball has their centennial match here. And don't forget that also tomorrow night is the National Honor Society induction. That's at 7:00 over at our O'Plane auditorium. So I think there was an invite out there on Outlook. So if you haven't responded to that, please do, just so that our sponsors know who's anticipated to come from the board. And then this weekend, our robotics team is actually in Milwaukee. They're in Peoria for the last regional. And this regional's up in Milwaukee on Thursday and Friday. And they actually go up Wednesday and come back Saturday. So that's their second regional. We wish them good luck. As a reminder, we also have an early dismissal this Friday. And next week, we have spring break. So the offices will be -- the district office will be open most of the week. The schools will be hit or miss, but that's just a heads up on next week's calendar. But we will be in at the district office. And next on our agenda is our departmental report for tonight. And so Willie Garrick is going to bring up our fine two PE leads.
I'd just like to introduce Mark Mica. He's our lead teacher at the O'Plane campus. And Brandon Shield, he is the lead teacher at the Allman campus. And they have a nice little presentation. So I'm going to let them take it away.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. We just want to share with you a little bit about what's going on in the PE departments, both at O'Plane and at Allman, and how we're kind of tying everything together with this fitness initiative. The program initiative, first and foremost, is over the last several months, we've been working across town with our colleagues at a vertical alignment of all our curriculums. And the goal is to have a level of mastery of certain types of skills from freshman through senior year, basically benchmarks in the standard-based curriculum that include a variety of skills, not just sport-related, but also fitness-related, lifestyle-related, behavior management, and things of that nature. As far as the freshman curriculum goes on our side of town, we focused on movement skills and the aspects of health-related fitness that are in accordance with the enhanced PE initiative set forth by the state. There's been a couple of changes in standards, and we're lining everything up with that. Sophomore team sports have also brought from that curriculum with learning readiness and the enhanced PE methods to increase activity levels through a variety of game modifications and things to keep kids more active for a greater duration of the class period to maximize activity time. Sophomore life fitness has been rebranded into sophomore cross-training. And we've incorporated more what's called metabolic conditioning and other methods of training and other healthy lifestyle topics. And one of the things I'm most proud of as lead teacher is the sophomore conditioning class is still one of the most popular classes, serving about 450 kids a day in the weight room.
Just to highlight, like he's talking about the athletic strength and conditioning class over the other campus, that it is as strong as it is moving forward. Starting from the 14-15 year, moving from 16-17, with some of the additions, with the facilities, with the weight room and stuff, this is before the new weight room. With what they're doing over there, we had 162% increase in student activity. And the best part about that is you have just talking about your athletes that are in these classes. These are your regular, everyday students that are in there. Then, now, last year, going into this year, the upcoming year, 17-18, with the enhancement, with the weight room stuff, the increase is up 230% from that 15-16 year originally. So as you can imagine, the activities that we're doing in these classes, these are lifelong activities that they can continue on moving forward and so on along those lines. In addition to increasing enrollment, the strength and conditioning, we've also had a powerlifting club. And this last Saturday, we won both the girls' and the boys' powerlifting competitions. So that was our first event, and we were able to take first in both of those. And then, as well as this last year, we also had the addition of the new dance class that you guys improved last year, which is going really, really well. And it's continuing the same way moving forward with enrollment for 16-17.
Facility improvements, I'll let Brandon talk about Allman.
Like I just said, with the increase, this is the biggest difference in our classes here with the new weight room, with the enrollment. As you can see the picture there, most of you guys have probably seen it on the other one as well. The kids really, really love it. As the classes are set up, you're getting multiple workouts in there at the same time. So we're engaging every single student that comes through these classes. And these, again, are activities that they're going to be able to take moving forward.
And then through creative use of space over at O'Plane, we're able to install a mini-gym. This is also some of the equipment that the staff has been using as part of their workouts after school. We were actually able to increase the amount of square footage for activity space, which was previously a dead space. So with this equipment here, we're able to get those benchmarks, as previously mentioned, about teaching kids various movement skills and doing it in different parts of the building. In terms of department highlights, we're really proud to play a critical role in the facilitation of the five-part survey they put on by the University of Chicago. We're able to coordinate that with the administration at both buildings in order to get the kids to take the survey on their Chromebook. And again, as Ms. Rogers mentioned, the staff participation in wellness activities is rising steadily, before school, after school. Staff is getting in, and you can see the pickup in morale on both campuses when they're able to get those workouts there.
Over here, last year, before the ACT, we had an activity, ACT, Activity Activate Your Brain, which we opened up the facilities at 6:30 in the morning. And the average test score increased by us opening that up was a 4.84% increase on the ACT on that given day. So not only did we open it up for a half-hour workout before the actual test, we also gave each kid a piece of fruit as they came through the door that was donated by Jewel. Every year, twice a year, we do a blood drive here for the local community. Over the course of the last four years, we've had 2,480 participants in the last four years. And for every donation, within that pint of blood, has the opportunity to save up to three people. And then this last year, this is a little bit look through the athletic department, but Deb Perry, within the PE department, kind of headed this. The Max Schuritz Foundation screening for a teens event on March 8th. Both campuses, back and forth, we had 1,581 students participate in EKG screening, which are able to find some miscellaneous heart conditions for a number of students here at both schools.
So with that, we were actually able to get students notified of care that they might need that would refer through the Max Schuritz Foundation. Thank you for your time.
Were these 1,581 students? They were not all athletes then, is that correct?
This was an optional EKG screen that every student in the building, freshman through senior year, was able to actually sign up for and have it conducted during the school day, during the PE period.
And how much did it cost?
It ranged, it was $15, yeah.
And if the student couldn't pay that, what happened? It was waived?
It was waived.
There was a question that they thought online, and there was a little spot where they could check.
It was part of the registration process that the foundation covered.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't know they could waive it. Thanks for all your help. You did a great job with everything. Appreciate it.
Mark, thanks again to your leadership for making sure we had those screens as well. I know you put a lot of time into that and obviously to Deb.
And we did, just we had E kids that were identified. And one of them actually, next couple of weeks later, was in surgery.
Oh, my gosh. That's terrific. I mean, I'm glad we found it. I'm glad we found it. No, that's terrific, he's having surgery.
And the board too, their plan is in every other year at particular districts. So that's why we encourage kids to do it as much as possible because they won't be ready.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Ready then? Okay. Moving on to new business. The first item is the IHSA membership renewal for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Just an annual process.
Annual renewal, every year we have to renew.
I moved to approve the membership renewal to the Illinois High School Association for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
Your call.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next item is the presentation discussion of the Stern School Road property.
I am going to do it. Tammy Beck with Shamow could not be with us tonight, so her and I did go through the presentation. And I will go through the particulars. If we have any questions for Tammy, we'll make sure and refer those to her. I've given you a paper copy.
Oh, thank you.
Just so everybody has it in front of them in case we have any technical glitches tonight. Last board meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the Stern School Road property. And since the board has, had talked about refinancing, doing a refinancing this October, like we did last October, I asked Sandy to, or to Tammy to incorporate a possible refinancing of the land along with the refunding of the remaining two thousand, Series two thousand seventeen, seven, and two thousand eight A bonds. So just seemed to be a good time. The summer will go by quickly, and a refunding like this does take several months to do. So let me go ahead and get through this. This, like I said, is the first of a two-step plan that was approved by the Board of Education last fall, last October. We refunded a portion of the Series two thousand seven and two thousand eight bonds. And at that time, the board had discussed refinancing the remainder of those in October of two thousand seventeen. And the reason it's split into two years is because the closer we get to the call date, the, you know, there's different laws that kick in, and there's different cost ramifications of that. So the second step was to refinance that debt in two thousand, the fall of two thousand seventeen, which would be one-point-eight million dollars on the two thousand series, two thousand and seven series bonds, and two-point-two million dollars on the Series two thousand and eight bonds. These two bonds are non-referendum bonds, which means that there, we use what's called debt service extension base. It is levied in the bond fund, not paid out of operations. If you remember last year, when we did refinance those two bonds, we had about a six-point-nine-three percent net present value return and close to a four-hundred thousand dollar savings to the taxpayer. So we would look to do the same, same thing this year. This is the tiny piece, and I know probably those of you in the audience maybe cannot see this, but you can see the two yellow shaded bonds, and those are the Series two thousand seven, two thousand eight A that we planned on refinancing. And then you'll see two boxes that, actually, a shaded box in a salmon color, which is the outstanding debt on our Stern School Road property. So one of the bonds is tax-exempt. If we refinance the debt on the Stern School Road property, that would be a taxable bond. But it would be, it could be refinanced along with the other two bonds. So it would be three bonds refinanced, and they would be, instead of any, anything being paid out of operations, which is the land, it would be all levy, all debt passed on to the taxpayers. But the hope would be that even if we pass that debt on to the taxpayers, that we get savings on the other refinance to offset the costs. So ultimately, no cost to the taxpayers. So that would be our goal. I'm going to really skip this next slide. This is for your information. It is the amount of payments that we can use for non-referendum debt. So it's, you know, I think more technical than what we want to discuss tonight. The current debt on the land, it's called Series two thousand and fourteen. It's a tax-exempt debt certificate. Right now, it's placed with J.P. Morgan Chase. It was refunded, or refinanced, in two thousand and ten. Right now, there's a mature, a principal outstanding of four million nine hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. It's going to mature, three hundred thousand of that will mature on January first, two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand twenty, we're going to have a balloon payment of four-point-three million dollars. So we're going to have to take action on this, this debt certificate anyway at some point. Yes, Ms. Biondi?
One thing, it says the outstanding debt on Stern School Road is five million two hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred.
Five hundred.
And here it says four million nine hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred. Can you explain the difference?
It did?
That's what they're like. Right here, that was the original principal back in two thousand ten.
Right, but on another slide, it said.
Is that the salmon color thing?
Oh.
See, in the salmon color, you'll see we've got a three.
Oh, it was five million something. I just saw it.
It's on the slide, it has the three things, down at the bottom of that salmon color, there's five million two hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, John. I knew I'd just seen it.
We're going to pay three hundred thousand of that, obviously, beforehand.
We already did. The three hundred thousand right there's already been paid.
Okay.
Hopefully, that clarifies your question. So we have a balloon payment coming due January first, two thousand twenty. We've got to take action. If we're refinancing this year, it might be a good idea to take action now on that. There is a small, what they call a breakage cost, if we, like a prepayment penalty on this debt. They would re, it's right now thirty-six thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. They would recalculate that by the time you refinance it.
So would be higher or lower?
Can't, can't answer that question. I would hope it would be lower because we're closer to maturing. Right now, the interest rate on the debt certificates is two-point-one-seven percent, which is, which is very good, but it's, you know, ending in a couple of years here.
So overall, is the plan to refinance four million? Four million? Thank you, John.
Yeah. It would be to refinance the debt on Stern School Road and refinance the remaining portion of Series two thousand seven and two thousand eight EA, combine it in a package, get net present value savings on the two thousand seven and two thousand eight A, so we can have a net breakeven to our taxpayers, or better. So that would be the ultimate goal. That follow?
When did this start? In June?
No, October.
We did the first refinancing in October, but we really started the conversations in June and July.
This is a conversation.
It's, you know, we're always looking at different opportunities, and the conversation came up last board meeting with Stern School Road property. And that we're paying for the debt in, out of operating funds right now. And that's really the next slide here. Two thousand and fourteen debt certificates must be paid back through district's operating funds. We can shift that to, to, out of the operating funds and through our regular bond levy. And that will take a taxable refunding. And you do that with taxable funding bonds. So it shifts, shifts the debt service payments from the operating funds to the debt service extension base, otherwise known as the bond fund. So that gives us more room in our budget, our operating budget, to handle expenditures as they come due.
Isn't that a shell game?
No, it does feel like a shell game, but I'll tell you why it wouldn't be a shell game. Because like we did for, I believe, three consecutive bond issues, we've refinanced the debt at a lower rate, saving the taxpayer money. So this may cost, this would cost the taxpayer some money, but we would look to continue to reduce their debt payments on other debt, making it a wash. So that would be the philosophy behind the position that, you know, PMA would look to, to bring forward to the board.
How is the interest rate going, going to affect the savings?
That's very hard to say because interest rates set by the Fed don't directly or always translate to bond issues. It's, it's kind of like your mortgage. I remember watching my, watching the Fed's interest rate because I thought it would have an adverse effect on my mortgage rate, and it doesn't necessarily do that. So it really depends on supply and demand, the type of, type of issue, whether it's taxable or tax-exempt. You know, what's going on in the market, all those things would have factors on the interest rate. Now, this, this, this is presentation purposes only. They haven't gone through and done a deep dive, but they've put together a summary for you. Just as you get planning in the future, you will be thinking about combining, possibly combining these three pieces together. And so at this point, you know, you do have to, like we've said, like we said last October when we did the refunding of a portion of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, you've got to wait and see what the interest rates do to see if it makes sense. And the board always sets a net present value savings level. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, sets a three percent threshold as a net present value savings. The board usually sets a little higher. I think our parameter resolution starts with three, but we usually target a higher net present value savings. So again, this is just something to think about as you move forward. And, you know, it does present the advantage of taking the payments that we're making out of operating funds and hopefully breaking even as we pass them through the bond fund. So that would be the goal.
Carol, how will other districts are refinancing too?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to cause us to possibly get a?
An interest rate that would not be favorable for us?
Yes, yes, you are absolutely correct. If there's a lot of people out in the market selling, it does have an impact on our, on our interest rate. So, you know, credit rating has an impact on our interest rate. So if you've got, you know, other people with better credit ratings, their bonds are more attractive. But it depends on the size of the issue and a whole bunch of other things.
So our credit rating is double A, is that correct?
Double A plus.
Plus.
Double A plus.
And how does being under review by the state affect our credit rate?
That is factored into our, under review by the state, what do you mean by that? I'm sorry. I'm going to ask for clarification.
Well, I thought I saw.
And it's our status with the state.
Oh, okay, you're talking about our financial status.
Right, thank you.
That's what I thought you meant, but I wanted to make sure. I wanted to make sure because right now, I think the state's under a lot of review on many different fronts. Right. We would be, we would have another rating call with standards and pores, and it'll depend on what this year looks like more than anything. It doesn't help us. So it doesn't help us, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to downgrade us either.
And if we have a, I don't want to, in my opinion, it's a loss. We're going to be two point, at least two-point-three million in red.
Right.
How is that going to affect all of that? It will affect our rating with standard and pores, correct?
Probably, yes. If that happens, if that comes to fruition, or some version of it comes to fruition, it would be a more difficult rating call. And we probably would have a downgrade, I would imagine. Can't forecast that, though.
Oh, I know that. I know that.
Hypothetically, that would make sense.
So that the public understands what's going on.
Right.
Because a lot of us don't understand about these bonds and, and the ratings and interest rates and all of that. So I'm trying to kind of clarify it for somebody who is trying to understand.
Your questions are very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions by the board? Yes, Mr. Drake?
Hypothetically, let's say I was going to sell this land in six months.
Yes. No. No. No.
What's the timing in which refinancing wouldn't make sense if we were going to sell it?
Within three years?
It would be a three years or, three years or less is kind of the, yeah. Absolutely, you wouldn't want to refinance it.
A savings doesn't all come on the first day, obviously.
No.
You've got to, yeah, you've got to hold the money for a while.
As you've seen in some of our other debt, our payments, our principal payments are not necessarily equivalent like a mortgage would be. So it's how the whole debt picture fits together, but you're right.
Carol?
Sure.
Related question.
Sure.
At our last meeting, we had a presentation by our contractor.
Yes.
At that time, it was suggested that the onsite inspection was going to be done on the roofs.
Uh-huh.
And then also, next month in April, some facet of the, or potential, he's going to have to act on.
Yes.
Can you update us on that?
You want to update on that? Sure.
Can we, can we continue on just with the Stern School before we go there? Because I believe that we should do what I reflect Mr. Munda said to the newspaper in two thousand and eleven, which was, when there was controversy at the time that the land was purchased, I believe, Mike, you were quoting the paper saying, "It's up to the community and the taxpayers to decide what we do with it at another point." And I think we're at that point now because based on the last board meeting when we were talking about next year and declining enrollment and possible reduction in staff, there are people in the community who say, "Sell the vacant lands." That was bought, we've been paying on it since two thousand and nine. I've said repeatedly, I was on the Woodland School Board in two thousand and nine. We had declining enrollment in nine, ten, and cut teachers. And they're in the newspaper now with the same problem. So there's never going to be a need for a third campus. So I think it's time to talk to the taxpayers and talk to the community about what do you want to do with this? Because Warren Township High School is chartered under its non-for-profit to educate students. And if we're going to educate students, we should not be first looking to cut teachers. The things in the classroom need to be protected first, and those things outside the classroom that make no impact on the classroom should be looked at as the first things to be cut. And the classrooms, teachers, and all of the things that affect that student's education should be protected and at the bottom of our priorities in, you know, protect that and look at all the other ways to cut. So I think the time is now to have a community taxpayer forum and talk. So I think the time is now to have a community taxpayer forum and talk about this and what do people want to do with it before we decide whether they want us to refinance it, not refinance it, sell it, solar energy? Or do we use our own campuses for the solar energy with the roofs and the parking lot and standalones on the two campuses?
And the wetlands.
So I think it's time that we talk to the taxpayers.
Okay, just a couple of things, Catherine. Nice, nice to know that you're running for office. But, you know, never is a long time. Never is a, remember that. Never is a long time. And for you to sit there and say, "We could never need this property," it's just not true. You're just, you're making false statements. And when Woodland was cutting all those teachers, when you were on the board over there, we weren't cutting teachers, we were saving money. I let you finish.
I can tell you that Mary Perry Beach was on those Financial Advisory Community Task Force. She was there in all the meetings. Dr. Mary Perry Beach was involved, and so she was aware.
Order. Order. You didn't let me finish. I let you finish. So, never is a long time. And we have, you know how many acres of undeveloped land are in this district? Do you have any idea?
I don't know, but that's a hundred acres sitting there vacant.
It's several thousand, which they could build houses on. And once they start doing that, you know how much a hundred acre is gonna cost for a new campus if we need it? A lot more than four million dollars, which we owe today.
I think you need to talk to the community because the community doesn't understand how we're going to have another campus.
You're making things up as you go along, saying never. Never is a long time. Thank you. Moving on.
Solar. Tomorrow, we will be having a structural engineer come look at both the almond and the Oak Plain roofs. Yes.
Bringing up the roofs. The Oak Plain roof got damaged in the windstorm or whatever storm it was, something.
We, we had a piece of equipment fall over and we were...
Did it damage?
No. There was a, a small hole dent in the roof, but we were able to upright the unit. For some reason, it was not bolted down, so they rebolted it and had to do a small fix to the roof, but nothing significant.
So how old is the roof at Oak Plain?
Uh, two, it was, I looked that up today. It was built in two thousand and eight. We have thirty-two sections of roof. Thirty have been replaced since two thousand and eight.
We have, how many sections?
Thirty-two sections.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I am so sorry. Thirty-two sections and eight have been replaced.
Thirty, had, thirty have been replaced.
Thirty-two sections and we've replaced thirty of them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Since two thousand and eight.
I got two thousand and eight, I just didn't hear how many.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. So then, of course, over the new section, those roofs are new, over the new science wing. And over the weight cardio room. So the roof assessments are getting done tomorrow. Last week, I went to the open house at Lake County, talked to the direct, deputy director there and also people doing the amendment for solar. The amendment is going a little slower than, than we had thought. But I also did get to meet with Mr. Hints, who did the presentation yesterday, or last, last board meeting. If we do a ground mount system here in the area by the track, and we did a ground mount system at the parking lot of Oak Plain along with a roof mount system, the, in solar, the district would generate about sixty-three percent of their electricity needs. We would also have the largest ground mount system in Lake County. So, right now, we are out for a request for proposal with the Capital Development Board. Those, those proposals will be in on the twenty-third of April.
Does DLA handle that?
No, DLA is not. It, the company that, we will get responders to this. So we put out the RFP based on Gray's Lakes Request for Proposal. The company that's doing the analysis for us and getting the structural engineer out is at Performance Solutions. That was, Kurt Hints was out here last time.
Okay, what, what's the name of that company? Cause he never had it on any of his things.
I think it was Performance.
Performance, yeah, did Performance...
I didn't see it on any of his things. Performance is the name?
Performance Solutions, I think.
And his name is Kurt?
Kurt, yes. K-U-R-T. H-I-N-T-Z.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Walls, any other questions?
Thanks, Carol.
So it, it is moving along.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of a side effects to replace current scrolling panels with digital boards. Gonna cost three million dollars?
The cheapest. Um, I have, I'll, I'll go ahead and go through this. I have Mr. Pose here for us, for assistance. Side Effects is a company that we've been using for many, many years for our scoreboards. Football scoreboard, scrolling scoreboard in the gym.
Escalable gym.
So they are looking to upgrade our scrolling scoreboard to a digital scoreboard. And what that would do is allow us to have digital signs, like when somebody shoots a three-pointer, we could splash wow across the digital board along with the advertising. So, a little bit, like a mini, mini, mini-tron. It's a mini-tron.
Not gonna be as big as one of Alice, we know.
Uh, so, so again, the, the proposal that's before you would be, they sell advertising, covers the cost of the upgrade to the board, the school, the, the digital sign. The district, once the sign is paid for, can collect some of that advertising revenue. To date, we've had, what, Mark, three scoreboards put in? And it hasn't cost us a dime. So we'd like to continue with Side Effects and have a, an agreement with them that we have the digital scoreboard for the... Escalable and other sports that participate in there.
Volleyball, whatnot.
Everything.
Badminton. No water polo.
In commissions and fees.
Uh-huh.
Is this what we had in the original contract with them? The verbiage is exactly the same.
I will go back, I did go back and look and the verbiage was the same.
I'm a little bit confused. The school is responsible for installing signage after the initial installation date. But can you explain that to me? I don't know this much about these signs and things. Or Mark, Mark may be better able to...
In the scrolling panels, maybe the initial scrolling panels went in, and then any subsequent new one, new, every three years, they're, they're updated. You know, people can renew. To save costs, we have our buildings and grounds people put them in. This is more digital, so we will be putting in via computer, via technology. It won't be, no one's gonna have to come and, and, you know, pull out the old one and put the new one in. It'll all be digital. So they will send us the new digital advertising and we will enter it into our, into our new digital board.
Okay. A concern I have is that it says, "Any revenue due to the school will be paid within six months from the time all sponsor revenue is collected and upon confirmation of equipment use and the fulfillment of sponsor incentives." Why are we waiting six months to collect? Is, what am I missing here?
They collect...
I know they collect, but they're gonna pay us six months after they collect.
After, well, we gotta, we gotta break even first. They don't pay us if, if, if it costs five thousand dollars to put the new, the new digital system, until their revenue from the digital advertising reaches the five thousand dollar mark. Anything after that is when we start to get our revenue from it. Like, when we put the new scoreboard in, we, we owe them by definition thirty-five thousand dollars because that's what it costs to put a new scoreboard in the stadium. Through their advertising that they did and the money they get, they accumulated the dollars. Like, I can tell you right now, when we did the first round in the, in the gym with the scrolling panel scoreboard, we had to go to the second round cycle of advertising to finally break even for what it costs to put everything in. The nice thing about this is we modernized our scoreboard and not a dime on the district. You know, the only thing we've paid in all the scoreboards we've put in through Side Effects is we paid twenty-five hundred dollars for the insulation costs of the stadium one, just because it was a little bit different because of the floodplain where we put it in. But that's all we paid out of pocket for two scoreboards in the gym and the big one in the stadium.
Did we pay for it, Mark, or did the boosters pay for it? The twenty-five thousand.
Might have paid for that. I don't remember.
I think the boosters paid for it.
They might have. They, they, I'm just saying in general.
Oh, okay.
Out of pocket for, other than Side Effects.
Okay. Now, we don't sell the advertising. They go out and sell the advertising.
They use me as a reference. If, if a company wants to, wants to contact me about everything, part of the deal is they're allowed to have a night where they can, you know, sit out in the, in the foyer and, you know, and advertise their, their business. That's part of the agreement. They're also given a, the advertisers giving one, a, two passes to be used to entry into the games throughout the season. That's just the incentive for them to spend three thousand dollars for, for advertising. And I don't know, I really don't know how well it works for those people, but people still continue to advertise on a regular basis. They don't have any problem filling the scrolling, scrolling panel, and that's why they want to go digital because we can get double the advertisement with the digital. Wow, if we want to, yes, wow, amazing.
Right. Now, um, have we...
Or anything like that?
Not that I know of. I don't think it's that far advanced.
Just checking.
Have we ever had a problem with any of the ads?
No. No, because, I mean, we have final say in the advertisement.
And we've, but we've never had a problem anyway.
Nope.
Do we put up smoking ads? We don't, do we, or...
We don't do pubs, we don't do...
Okay, that's what, you're answering the questions.
Learned that a long time ago when we do them with our, with our program.
Okay.
Thanks so much for your help.
All right, then I move to approve the side, to move to approve Side Effects to replace the current scrolling panels with digital boards.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Anderson, second by Drake. Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Havering?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes. So the next item is the potential action on the Uniform Grievance Code complaint. So we need to make a motion to authorize, to authorize the board president, to authorize a law firm to make a response on, on our behalf.
Don't we have to say what our response is?
Yeah, and say what our response is.
In public?
Right.
Oh, okay, because I don't see any motion here.
Right, well, we didn't know what we were gonna do.
I'm trying to figure it out.
So we have to make one, so. Okay.
I move that we find that there is no grievance and direct our...
Just state who made the...
Oh, thank you. I move that we found there was no, there were...
The lawyers did.
Pardon me?
Right.
I know, but it's fine. Go ahead, Liv. Don't stop her every other sentence.
I move that we approve the lawyer's recommendation that Cory Geiser has no grievance based upon her grievance complaint.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, Ambel.
Um...
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Havering?
Yes.
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 And Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Okay. The next item is disciplinary recommendation for student two thousand seventeen oh six.
Do we have the motion and then I'd like to discuss it?
I move to approve disciplinary recommendation for two, student two thousand seventeen oh six as presented.
Discussion? May I?
Proceed.
According to Illinois statute five slash ten dash twenty-two point six, in the tenth line, the board is the one who is supposed to hear an expulsion. In its place, we can appoint an, a hearing officer, but it has to be appointed by the board. The hearing officer at this expulsion was not appointed by the board at an open meeting. And therefore, I do not believe that we can expel this student. We have asked for legal advice, but we're not given legal advice. And therefore, I feel that we cannot expel this student at this time, we cannot expel the student, period, because the time limits are up as of tonight. So, um...
Says, "The board or hearing officer appointed by it, as such, shall state the reasons for dismissal and the date on which the expulsion is to become effective." If a hearing officer is appointed by the board, he or she will report to the board a written summary of the evidence heard in the hearing and the meeting. Such action thereof as it finds appropriate. This, this policy, this law does not say that, it is unclear if it is part of the statute and the law that the hearing officer has to be appointed by the board. That is what we're asking for clarification.
Um, according to the Illinois School Code, we do have to either hear the expulsion or to appoint a hearing officer. And therefore, since the board didn't hear it and the board did not, did not appoint an, a hearing officer, it, we have, tonight is the last night that we can expel the student.
We're gonna, we're still gonna vote, so.
Okay. That, I just wanted to go on record.
Thank you very much.
Please make sure that's in the notes, Jean.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Do we have a second? Anderson and Conway? Roll call.
Mr. Drake?
No.
Mr. Munda?
Uh, I will abstain as I am the principal of the Lake County Regional Safety Program.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
I'd like a clarification. Can you read back the motion, please? I am... Sorry.
Motion, I, you want me to read it? Okay, the motion I said was, says, "I move to approve disciplinary recommendation for student two thousand seventeen dash oh six as presented."
I vote no.
I'm abstaining because I don't know who the hearing officer is. I don't know who appointed the hearing officer. I don't know when the appointment was. And the school board attorney should have given us as their client, the school board, advice on how to deal with this.
Not gonna pass it?
Yes.
Yes. I didn't say it was passed. I didn't say it was passed.
Oh, oh, okay. I, I'm just trying, I, I'm having hearing problems, I have to admit, because I-
We got, uh-
I have three yes, two no, and two abstentions.
So how do you count abstentions? They don't count as votes at all, so now you have three yes and two no, so it passes. It's a majority of the votes cast, right? We'll double check that. We'll make sure that that's the way to count it. But at this point, the resolution has passed, so. I believe that is how it is done as well, but we will not make a mistake on that, anyway. Okay. Let's see. iPad went to sleep. So, resolution for non-employment of long-term subs.
This is an annual process by which we need to release our long-term subs?
Every year, so.
I'll move to approve the recommendation of non-employment of long-term substitutes for 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Drake, and Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell, yes. Mrs. Conley, yes. Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the Exhibit A hiring recommendations. So I move to approve Exhibit A hiring recommendations, numbers 162 through 173 as posted, and number 174, Rob Parrott promotion, number 175, Rena Sackowitz, uh, leave of absence, number 176, Elsie Savala, uh, new hire, uh, 177, Rob, Robert Parrott, new hire promotion.
I'll second.
Conway. Roll call.
Second by Conway. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Conley, yes.
Yes. Thank you, Rob. Bert? Next item is the approval of the payment of the bills for 321, 2017.
I move to approve payment of the bill, March 21st, 2017, in the amount of $4,257,721.47.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake? And second by Munda. Mrs. Conley?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Conley, yes. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, approval of the Legal Services Bill for 321, 2017.
With the payment of the Legal Services Bill for 321, 2017, in the amount of $5,416.07.
Walls was the second. Roll call. Motion by Drake?
Second by Walls.
Correct.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Conley, yes. Mrs. Conley?
No.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes and two no. Motion here is-
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of February 28th, 2017.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes and the executive session minutes of February 20, 2017.
Second.
I have a question. Under G of the-
E.
G, approval of hiring recommendations per Exhibit A, uh, and I just noticed this. Under yes, it says Jim Walls, Tom Drake, Mike Munda, Johnson. I don't know who Johnson is.
It was John Anderson.
Oh.
I saw that too.
I didn't know who it was. I was trying to figure out who it was.
There's not going to be anybody else here.
Well, I, that's why I couldn't figure out who Johnson was.
Bada boom. Okay, we'll fi, we'll fix that.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. You have a motion and a second?
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion.
Yes, we do. Right, right. It, yeah, we were just discussing.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes, as amended. Did we, we need to amend the motion before we vote yes.
All right, yes.
I abstain of that agreement. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Yes. That is the last item on the agenda, so I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Me? Oh, Tom.
Liz.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everybody.